October, regular school board meeting to order please. It will have the invocation by Mr. Henry LaFon from District Seven and then the pledge of allegiance.
Tonight, we question your wisdom, guidance, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of community. Fill us with your grace as we make decisions that will affect the faculty, staff, students, and all stakeholders of the LaFouche Parish School District. May we always remember that everything we do in our capacity here tonight, Lord God, is for the greater glory of you and the service of humanity. We ask all of this in your holy name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, united in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Item D, roll call.
Mr. Wright, here. Dr. Pia, here. Ms. Babin, here. Ms. Fatida, here. Mr. DuPlantis, here. Ms. Boujwa, here. Mr. LaFon, here. Ms. Wells, here. Ms. Rotten, here.
E, we will receive a report from Ms. Christine Russell, LaFouche Parish District Attorney. Welcome, Ms. Russell.
Good evening, as always. Thank you all for allowing me to come before you just briefly because it seems as though you have a pretty, uh, evening. Just to speak with you briefly on what we're doing at our office. As you know, we have many school programs that we're continuing each and every year before. Um, we have some for fourth grade, fifth grade. Uh, we have a personal environment program for around thirteen years old. We have our wobble goggles, we started vaping program, uh, and of course our domino program, which I encourage you, in the domino program that we do for all our seniors in the spring. I encourage you if you haven't seen one, of powerful speakers, um, that speak for us and for our children. We've seen some success, um, with those programs. All you need to do is your principals or your schools just need to get us a call. If there's not a program that we actually have, we'll come up with one. Or if there's something that we could do in the school, uh, just to support you, we're more than, uh, what, what, willing to go and, and support you in that program. Also, to let you know, our truancy program, uh, we're excited about that. We're pretty successful last year, great partnership, of course, of Mr. Phil's, always with Mr. Martin. Um, but Chrissy Pepper, who was our truancy officer, her last day was yesterday. She has a wonderful job opportunity, she's very excited, we're gonna miss her. But Angela Poisson, who was, uh, with the sheriff's office, she was an investigator in our child support, former SRO, is very excited to get into the juvenile department, she's looking forward to it. So she's coming in with a burst of energy, and so she will be working with all of you in truancy. She's got some great ideas and she's gonna work in our school programs as well. And, I, I can't forget, we always partner with our children's appetizer at LaFouche. And so anything we do in regards to them, we partner with them to make sure that we get in the schools to talk about good touch, bad touch, internet safety, or anything, anything else, all that you mean. So again, I want to be brief, know that we're a phone call away, we're here to support, we're here to work with you, but if there's anything we could add to you guys, please don't hesitate to get us on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your support also, thank you.
Item number two, awards and recognition. A, introduce new administrators, Mr. Martin.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Um, the first administrator I'd like to introduce tonight is not new to LaFouche Parish, nor to the school that she is taking the helm of. Uh, this is Ms. Allison Chassot, the new principal of South LaFouche High School.
Good evening, Superintendent Martin, Ms. Allison Boujwa, President, and all of the board members. I am so honored and privileged to be here tonight. Um, I'm super excited to be able to take this task and this journey with the amazing faculty and staff that I have at South LaFouche High School, and an amazing community and amazing students. I'm ready to lead and inspire those that will be with me along this journey, and I'm just really looking forward to it. I've had a few people stop me in the last week or so and say, "Are you well?" And I'm like, "Sure, I'm well," meaning, "Are you crazy?" "You're thirty-three," but I, I, to be quite honest, I have a new sense of, uh, energy with, with rejuvenation that I feel, and I have a lot of great ideas that, um, I'm excited to put into play and, and lead the school in a positive direction. So, thank you, thank you for the opportunity, and, um, I'm just really excited. So, I leave you.
And I know that your dad is very, very proud of you. He was Ronald Perry, who was on the school board for many years, but also, uh, active in the school system, so, um, I know he's very proud of you.
Oh, they're, they're with me on my community too, yes. Totally behind me, so, thank you.
I've heard great things already, Ms. Chassot, I always want to call you Ms. Perry. Ms. Chassot, and, uh, did you fix that signature when you made it?
I did, as soon as you gave that little, I did do that, so, we're good to go, we're good to go.
We're expecting great things, and I know you're gonna do well, thank you.
Thank you so much.
I like the sculptor.
Yeah.
Madam President, I did also remind her that my father served for forty-three years, so she's got at least ten.
One year at a time, but no, I'm truly honored and, uh, it's a privilege. So, uh, I'm really excited, really, really excited, I kind of feel like I'm starting over, you know? So, um, I thank you all for the opportunity.
Thank you, and thank you for stepping up.
Okay, next, uh, is a person who's also not new to LaFouche Parish, not new to the school that she's gonna be, uh, assisting to lead, uh, but somebody we're welcoming back to LaFouche Parish with open arms, new assistant principal, Central LaFouche High School, Ms. Melanie McCorgle.
Hi, thank you so much, I, I don't even know where to begin, so I'm gonna keep it short, and I'm so lucky and excited to be back in LaFouche Parish. It's been my home for a very long time, and I'm lucky to be back at the school, the high school that gave me a huge stepping stone, and Mr. Hill for giving me this opportunity, as well as you guys. Um, as you guys know, most of y'all know me, I'm a positive force, I, that is what you, that's why I used to drive everything I do, and those students, and I'm so excited and hopefully to encourage them and just lay out that positive behavior from the beginning, and I'm just, there's no more words just to say how excited I am, and it's just been an honor already to be here and to be back home, and I appreciate everything you guys have given to me in the past, and I'm so excited about my future here, so, go Trojans. And I'll have to say, this is my own dream shirt, but I will be buying more.
Thank you, I love that enthusiasm in your voice.
Thank you.
Welcome back to LaFouche, we're glad to have you.
I appreciate it, thank you so much.
Great evening. B, LaFouche Parish School District Student, Staff, and Group recognitions. So nice to see all of you tonight, you're such a great thing.
Many men.
Yes.
It's our pleasure to welcome all of you, um, to the portion of our meeting that you all are here for, um, our opportunity to recognize our students who are doing amazing things, um, and achieving at great levels. So I know to you, it probably seems like you're packed in here and that we're recognizing a lot of people, and on the middle school level, we are recognizing twenty-three students here tonight for those perfect scores on at least one section of the LEAP test. But to put it in perspective, we have about, on average, about a thousand students in each grade here in LaFouche Parish. So the fact that we are recognizing twenty-three at the middle school level, um, is an incredible achievement, um, and a reflection of not only their hard work, but the support that you, as their parents and guardians and family, um, give them, and the encouragement that you give them. Um, so we're gonna move into, um, handing out their awards. So Mr. Martin and Ms. Boujwa are gonna hand out your awards. Mr. Delcum is gonna read your names, if you could come up, um, and receive your award when your name is called, and then you'll face me, um, for a quick picture, and then tomorrow, these will be available, they'll be on our Facebook page, but also available on our website too, and you'll be able to download them there.
All right, here we go. We have, uh, one student, uh, who scored a perfect score on the sixth grade, e- English Language Arts portion of the LEAP test from the LCO Middle School, Philip Russo. All right, and the, uh, sixth grade math LEAP test from Bayou Community Academy Charter School, Lila Boujwa. Also from BCA, Sarah Preston. From Lockport Middle School, Vincent Lusko. From Sixth Ward Middle School, Brennan Orsono. In seventh grade, English Language Arts, from Bayou Blue Middle School, Donovan Chavez. Also from Bayou Blue Middle, Mia Harding. From BCA, Ari Ellender. From Golden Madder Middle School, Peyton Dordor. From Lockport Middle School, Hayden Gotro. From Lockport Middle, Kayla Alvarado. Also from Lockport Middle, Manny Robledo. From Raceland Middle School, Ava Morton. From Sixth Ward Middle School, Charlie O'Quinn. Perfect scores in eighth grade ELA, from Bayou Blue Middle School, Ella Gotro. From Bayou Blue Middle School, Lucille Dishman. From BCA, Ryland LeBlanc. From the Rose Cut Off Middle School, Arabella Morrison. And from Raceland Middle School, Connor Hitt. In eighth grade, algebra, perfect scores, from Bayou Blue Middle School, Agatha Tabor. From LCO, Ethan Keith. Also from LCO, Jake. From LCO, Jake Petrie. And from LCO, Cody Buffinay.
Okay, so that is half of the kids we're recognizing tonight, the, uh, the middle school students. So as you can see, uh, while we have a large number of people in this room right now, it's such a small fraction of the roughly three thousand kids that took the middle school LEAP test throughout the district. So, the, the job that you guys did in this test is remarkable. I know it's not the only thing you excel at, I look in your district honor band shirt, everything else that you guys are doing, so I just thank you for, uh, allowing us to teach your kids. Kids, thank you for the homework you put forth in this test, and I can't wait to see what you do in high school. Uh, folks, y'all have a very good evening, you're welcome to stay, but we're gonna get the next phase in as we take this next celebration, thank you all so much. Um, a- as Ms. Bolton was explaining to the, the group that was just in here, um, I don't know, we've got in here around twenty-five students. But to explain what their accomplishments are, you really have to look at the, the whole picture as she was explaining. There's around a thousand students in each grade band in LaFouche Parish. Uh, so in the, in the ninth grade, there are around a thousand students. That means, in the ninth grade, around a thousand kids took the algebra LEAP test, around a thousand kids took the English LEAP test. Um, what's in this room tonight are the very select few that scored a perfect on these LEAP exams, which is a really remarkable accomplishment. Um, I assure you, you all would do better on it than I would, but I promise you, I could score a perfect on this thing. Uh, I've taken some of these released questions, and they're really, really difficult. Um, so the accomplishments that, that we're celebrating tonight are not small. Um, and you represent a very, less than one percent of your grade band in the remarkable, the work you've done is truly remarkable. So having said all that, uh, I think that Mr. Delcum is gonna start with the minutes.
Yep. So the following students scored a perfect eight-fifty on the English one LEAP test from Central LaFouche High School, Aiden Stewart.
Now listen, Aiden, Aiden's got the more unfortunate being first, so the way this works, we'll take a picture here, we'll turn quickly for a picture for you all, but know that if you don't get a great one, we're gonna have these posted to our Facebook page and website tomorrow. Uh, and it's a very high-quality picture that you can share, because if they didn't get on, you know, the social media didn't have it.
From Central LaFouche High School, Isabel Bodwan. Okay, and from Central LaFouche High School, Robert Moat. Uh, these students scored a perfect eight-fifty on the English two LEAP test from Central LaFouche High School, Gabrielle Ballinger. From Central LaFouche, Jocelyn Alamon. From Central LaFouche, Matthew Reshort. From South LaFouche High School, Adler Berg. From South LaFouche High School, Caitlin Lu. From South LaFouche, Chandler Gisflair. From South LaFouche, Drew Como. From South LaFouche, Isabel McDonald. Also from South LaFouche, Joseph Thompson. South LaFouche, Nathan Dean. Also from South LaFouche, Sonia Lee. From Thibodeau High School, Ada Young. From Thibodeau High School, Ami Lu. Thibodeau High School, Kate Chessa. From Thibodeau High, Chloe Goddick. Thibodeau High School, Emily Gragnier. Thibodeau High, J.C. Andrus. Thibodeau High, Leila Email. Thibodeau High, Marla Voisin. Also from Thibodeau, Mia Gro. Thibodeau High School, Peyton Clemm. And finally, from Thibodeau High, Kate Kramer. And maybe did have one student in the parish that scored a perfect score on the U.S. History LEAP test, from South LaFouche High School, Judith Saucido.
All right, another round of applause. I guess I'll just close with, you know, when, when students arrive at this level of success, it, it's really a combination of a lot of things, a phenomenally gifted kid, super supportive parents, and, and really amazing teachers. So, we're very, very lucky that all three of these combinations occurred for all of these kids, and as I look around and recognize some of them from my advisory groups, or just walking around campuses, I know that school, and, and by school, I mean math, science, English, and social studies, are not their only passions, uh, they're, they're very, very diverse in all that they do, and so we're very, very proud of you, have a great night tonight. Uh, if you did drive here, be safe going home, if you didn't tell your parents, you deserve a, an evening out on the town. Go get some food, and thank you all so much for what you, uh, what you do to support these kids every day, thank you all.
Item number three, approval of board consent agenda items. A, approval of board consent agenda items. B, minutes of the regular board meeting held September fourth, two thousand twenty-four. And C, observances proclaimed by LaFouche Parish School Board, Family Engagement Month in the state of Louisiana, November, two thousand twenty-four. National Native American Heritage Month, November, two thousand twenty-four. Write your motion. Dr. Pia, second by Mr. LaFon, is there any public comment? Any board comment? Hearing none, we can vote. And motion does care. Number four, approval of policy and academics committee recommendations. As per meeting held September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Dr. Guia.
A, to approve revisions to policy B, I'm sorry, A, B, C. B, qualifications for school board members, so moved.
Seconded by Ms. Sharpenchay, is there any public comment? Any board comment? Hearing none, we can vote. And motion does care.
B, to approve revisions to policy B, 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 C. School board member continuing education, so moved.
Seconded by Mr. Wright, any public comment? Any board comment? We can vote. And motion does care.
C, to approve revisions to policy G, B, A. Contracts and compensation, so moved.
Seconded by Ms. Batten, any public comment? Any board comment? We can vote. Motion cares.
D, to approve revisions to policy G, B, R, I, B, sickly, so moved.
Seconded by Ms. Wells, any public comment? Any board comment? We can vote. Motion cares.
E, to approve revisions to policy G, B, R, I, B, B. Medical Leave Assistance Program, sick leave bank, so moved.
Seconded by Mr. Wright, excuse me, any public comment? Any board comment? We can vote. Motion cares.
F, to approve revisions to policy J, G, C. Student Health Services, so moved.
Seconded by Mr. Lefont, any public comment? Any board comment? We can vote. Motion cares.
G, to approve revisions to policy J, G, C, D. Administration of Medication, so moved.
Seconded by Ms. Petita, any public comment? Any board comment? We can vote. Motion cares.
H, to consider approving revisions to policy J, G, C, F, A. Behavioral Health Services for Students, so moved.
Seconded by Mr. Plantz, any public comment? Any board comment? Just want to say one thing that, um, these were all discussed at the Policy Committee meeting, and most of them were due to changes in the laws and statutes of the legislature, so that's why we have so many changes this, this one. Any other comment? We can vote. Motion cares.
I, to approve revisions to the job descriptions for the positions of principal, assistant principal, and dean of students, so moved.
Seconded by Ms. Sharpenchay, any public comment? Any board comment? Hearing done, we can vote. Motion cares.
J, to approve revisions to the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five academic school calendar, so moved.
I'll second that one. Any public comment? Any board comment? We can vote. Motion cares. Item number five, approval of business committee recommendations. As per meeting held September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, Ms. Sharpenchay.
Item A, to authorize Superintendent Jared Martin to sign the Verizon Funding Commitment Letter for the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five school year, so moved.
Seconded by Ms. Batten, any public comment? Any board comment? We can vote. Motion cares.
Item B, to authorize employees stipend pays utilizing the state appropriation fund for the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five fiscal year as presented by Jacquette Himmel, Business Manager, so moved.
Seconded by Mr. Lefont, any public comment? Any board comment? Yes, Ms. Batten?
I just want to go ahead and thank the Business Department again for making sure that this money is going out to our employees before Christmas holidays and, and on time of the year so that they can use it after.
Thank you. Yes, that's a great time to, to get a little stipend. Unfortunately, the state did make it a raise, but at least you get a stipend. Any other board comment? We can vote. Motion cares.
Item C, to extend the Emergency Project Management Services with All South Consulting Engineers LLC by extending the contract date through October thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-seven through a third amendment to the professional service contract, so moved.
Seconded by Dr. Guia, any public comment? Any board comment? Yes, sir, Mr. Lefont?
I know Mr. Bernard has tired of my constant questions to him concerning the, uh, the repairs to our school area, but he's done an outstanding job for us, he really has. And I just want the people in the district to know that.
Yes, yes. Any other board comment? We can vote. And motion cares. Item number six, approval of land and facilities management committee recommendations. As per meeting held September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Ms. Batten?
Item A, to approve a change our request in the sum of twenty-one thousand, five hundred ninety-seven dollars and fifty cents and add twenty-eight dates to the contract for critical path delays due to FEMA P H P review at St. Charles Own True School Classroom Edition, so moved.
Seconded by Ms. Petita, any public comment? Any board comment? We can vote. Motion cares.
Item B, to approve a request from South LaFouche Fan Football League to waive the fees for the use of facilities at South LaFouche High School for the fans of football playoffs. The requestor would be responsible for the three hundred dollar damage deposit and custodial fees. Elizabeth Dag will be the requestor, so moved.
Seconded by Mr. Wright, any public comment? Any board comment? We can vote. Motion cares.
Item C, to approve a request from Central LaFouche Baseball, Baseball Association to waive the fees for the use of facilities at Central LaFouche High School Athletic Field for baseball practice. The requestor would be responsible for the three hundred dollar damage deposit and custodial fees. Sean George will be the requestor, so moved.
Seconded by Mr. Lefont, any public comment? Any board comment? We can vote. Motion cares.
Item D, to approve, to approve a request from LA Six Volleyball to waive the fees for use of facilities at Bayou Blue Middle School Gym for volleyball practice, so moved.
Seconded.
There's, it looks like it's the policy, the motion for policy on the land and facilities, but the actual request is LA Six Volleyball, which would have.
Right, it's actually E on our agenda.
Gotcha.
It's the clip off.
Well, I don't think D belongs on the land and agenda at all.
Oh, okay, you're right.
That's the problem, yes, yes.
So it's, it's E on your agenda.
The requestor would be responsible for the three hundred dollar damage deposit and custodial fees. Ms. Terry Vickham will be the requestor, so moved.
Seconded by Ms. Wells, any public comment? Any board comment? Hearing none, we can vote.
Okay, so technically, this is item F.
On our agenda?
Yes, it should be item D, but on our agenda, it's item F. And the item reads as to consider the sale of surplus property adjacent to East Hill Middle School. Prior to receiving a motion or to, um, ask for a rec, read out the recommendation, recommended action, I would like to offer an amendment to this item. Members of the Board, Edie White has expressed an interest in acquiring the property on Seventh Street, which became vacant land as a result of the construction and completion of our new middle school. The item was placed on the agenda of the Land and Facilities Committee to consider the sale of the property and take appropriate action, so that it could be considered. I think it is fair to say that the committee has mixed opinions about how to best use the property, whether to keep it, sell it, or perhaps lease it long term to Edie White. So as a committee, we passed a motion to sell the property so that the item could be brought to the Board for its consideration. While I am opposed to an outright sale, Ms. Val and Mr. Henry voted to approve so it could at least move on to the entire Board for the Board's full consideration. Henry has also reserved his right to oppose a sale when the item is considered by the entire Board. In the meantime, the Superintendent has continued to stay in communication with Edie White, and while they have expressed the desire to purchase the property, they would be satisfied with a long-term lease of the property, given the proper, as possible reluctance of this Board to agree to an outright sale. All of that said, while the recommendation for your, for the sale of the property came out of the committee's consideration, I would like to offer an amendment to the recommendation as follows. I move to amend the motion for the approval of the sale of the property as follows. That the Board enter a twenty-year surface lease for property with Edie White subject to the following conditions. The annual rental paid to the LaFouche Parish School Board would be equal to its annual maintenance, the property of the property currently approximately thirty-five hundred dollars. Our attorney can put terms in the agreement that should, that should this amount increase or decrease, it will be reviewed annually and incorporated into the agreement by mutual agreement between both Boards. Improvements to the property by Edie White shall be pre-approved by the LaFouche Parish School Board. However, reasonable minor improvements shall be permitted. No permanent buildings or structures shall be erected. If in twenty years the agreement is not renewed or extended, Edie White will then remove all improvements if requested by the LaFouche Parish School Board. I think that a lease serves everyone's best interest in this instance. The LaFouche Parish School Board retains ownership and control of the property for the future. We cannot predict the demands that will be placed on the district for expansion due to population shifts, changes, and demands as a result of additional programs or classroom or administrative space needs. Because of its location, the property may become an important part of the district's long-range strategic plans for future boards. I also, it also puts the property in use immediately and serves a useful purpose, which enhances both of our school communities. So I will ask for a second as the, for the Board's consideration of this motion, so moved.
Madam President, uh, point of honor, so the item needs to be placed on the table first, I think on the table, but it needs to be up first.
Okay.
Then, once we get first and second, then an amendment can be corrected. So, uh, let's restate the, the motion as read, let's get it on the table, and then we can do an amendment.
All right, so you moving this motion?
So, I'd say read, read F.
F is to consider the sale of surplus property adjacent to East Thibodeau Middle School. I'll move it so we can put it on the table.
I'll second it.
So now technically, I'm sorry, you need to go through.
The public comment.
Right.
All right, is there any public, oh, I do have a, a blue card.
I'm, I'm gonna wave it to the amendment.
Okay. I do have a blue card on, um, Ms. Anna Perez.
Yeah, so basically, if I understand correctly, that, then.
Wait, wait, Ms. Anna, please come to the front, state your name and your address.
Yeah, so look, but after, good, good evening. My name is Anna Perez. I live in five thirteen Lake Court in the city of Thibodeau, and I've been there about seventeen years. And from what I'm understanding about this new motion, does that mean we just, are you now saying all nays to the sale of the surplus property, and then you're gonna reconsider the next amendment at the next COVID meeting? Is that what I'm understanding here, or can I say, that I completely oppose this now?
You can, you can definitely say your comment now.
Okay, I completely oppose it completely, for the mere fact that the city of Thibodeau needs to address drainage issues for this entire neighborhood. In April, we had a very massive rainstorm, and we flooded on Lake Court, it was terrible. Other parts of the city flooded as well. Hurricane Francine just recently passed through, and it's amazing with category ones, the amount of rain. And we purchased the Claymore and Tube Senior Home. And we purchased the Clayborne Tube Senior Home built nineteen forty-six, forty-two around there. And we've never flooded, and we have a little rental building in the back, they were used as our exercise room. If flooding, we had four inches of water. So my main concern as a citizen and taxpayer is that I would like the city of Tivido first to address the ongoing flooding issues we have in this neighborhood. Before we sell a big piece of property or lease to another entity for whatever purposes, because that's um. It's very stressful and we don't know how much further people can handle these floods. And if you go down Lake Court, you'll see a lot of people have thrown a lot of their belongings. One family had water in every single room of their house. So everything's out there on the street. So I personally feel the city of Tivido first needs to address for this surrounding area, the drainage issue before we give up a piece of property that can be used for a school, because after Hurricane Ida, some people from Terrible Parish moved up here and down the bio, moved into Tivido. Because we're high ground, we don't typically flood. And our infrastructure is pretty good, and we're really nice people and make great food and I love this town, we really do. And so my concern is, um, we might have a bunch of kids come up. And as a Roman Catholic, I will tell you, with the state of abortion, pro-life, pro-choice, we're gonna have a lot more babies. That's just something we should be aware of, that passed, I think, two years ago. So we're gonna have a lot more children, and as these storms, tropical storms, rainstorms come, I think the city of Tivido needs to first address drainage. And I would really be sad and upset if you gave up all that green space and it became a parking lot, even if they just drove their trucks and their cars on it. It would flatten the ground and I would, we'd be worried, where's that water gonna go? So before you do something like that, I know I have another neighbor, Ben Herring, who is speaking with the city administration regarding drainage issues. But before we give up this wonderful land for a future public school, my children went to Tivido High School and my youngest went to East Tivido School. Um, and they also attended Tivido Elementary. Uh, I don't want you to give up this precious piece of land when we have to look at the big picture. We are gonna have more children, and when I say more children, we're gonna have all kinds of children. And we're all aware that we have kids learn different abilities, and um, that's my main concern.
Okay, that's all. Thank you very much.
And I love Tivido.
Alright, any other public comment?
Roman Sankin went to Oujoua Street, Rachel Louisiana. I um greatly oppose the selling of property about the school system, any property. I mean, I think Hurricane Ida and now Hurricane Francine kind of pre- the Tivido issues. I mean, it just takes one hurricane in one year, you can lose a whole school, you may need someplace to build a new school at. So with that being said, having the land there next to the, uh, Tivido Middle School, across the street from the office there. I'll say, I'll say here in the business office over there, uh, I think that's not, that's not, that shouldn't even be an option that y'all should be thinking about selling. I do like Ms. Babbitt's amendment. I am just a little afraid that it is a long term amendment, that y'all school board and y'all as superintendent makes a, an amendment that, a clause in a contract that, you know. One, two, three, four, the next four school boards and probably one, maybe two, maybe two superintendents. Have, have, have to deal about, I, I'm, I'm trying to see Mr. Martin's, I'm young and he's not that young, you know, true? He's no age, he's no age. But uh, I emailed. I emailed a few members, email was bad about that, and uh, that's my comments on the main motion, I'll probably talk on the amendment again as well.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Please state your name and your address, sir.
Tim Robichaud, two twenty-two Route Pelletier in Tivido. I'm the president of Edie White. Um, first of all, thank you for even considering this. After much prayer, I thought I am in total agreement that purchasing the property is not the best way to go. And we are, we are certainly, I appreciate the fact you would consider leasing. Our main goal is to use it, uh, we go to Pelletier Park now to do a lot of things, uh, eighth grade football and stuff like that. Our main purpose would be to have a little closer eighth grade football, soccer, perhaps track field events, other than that, that, that would be the use of the property. So we are certainly in agreement with, uh, considering, you considering the lease, uh, and even lessening the years. I, I don't, I, I think that, once we start this lease, I think we will all agree that this is a great way to use the property. And unless the, our school board needed it for some sort of facility or something like that, I'm sure we would wanna continue to use it as long as possible.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment? Any board comment?
So, now that it's, it's time for us to speak again, I do have a letter that was written by one of my constituents who could not be here tonight. It is a signed letter, he asked that I go ahead and share his thoughts. If you attended the land meeting or if you um, watched the meeting, you know that Mr. Richard Knackham from five nineteen Lake Court attended. He could not be in attendance tonight, but he did reach out and ask that I could please share his thoughts. So his letter is as stated. Ms. Tina Babbitt, members of Lafouche Parish School Board and all others present. I have asked Ms. Babbitt to read my thoughts, opinions, and recommendations at this meeting due to my absence. Flooding and drainage issues and problems. It would be my recommendation that these issues be fixed or solved. Some of them have existed for years. This pro- this problem has gotten worse with the elevation of land, addition of parking lots and buildings, and improvement to main campuses over the last ten years or so. As a concerned citizen, I ask all of you to work together, the board, city officials, architects, engineers, and the administration of Edie White, home and Tivido diocese. Problems or issues don't just go away, they actually need to be solved and dealt with. Lease agreement. It is my opinion that before any lease agreement is signed, whether it be with Edie White Diocese of Home and Tivido or anyone else, the above problems and issues of drainage and flooding should be addressed. I continue to grapple with the thought of what is more important, a track field complex, or shotputs and javelins, or the flooding of my neighbors' properties and homes. This is the time to do something about it. Please remember that my neighborhood has flooded twice this year, January twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, and for Hurricane Francine. The problem will continue to get worse if we continue to ignore it. Just to clarify, my house and property did not flood for this storm, but I still have concerns. Thank you all for listening, and I compliment all of you on what you do to educate our youth. Sincerely yours, and I trust you will make the right decisions, Mr. Richard Knackham.
Thank you. Any other board comment?
Just a question. I believe we have the board on this motion, Dr. Eard. If it passes it, if it would pass, then we vote on the amendment?
No, so at this point, an amendment would be appropriate. Uh, and a first and second would carry that into discussion, just like we just had. Uh, and then we would vote on the amended motion as a whole.
So if you, Madam President, can I go ahead and read the amended motion again for everyone's consideration?
The amended to the motion.
The amended to the, amended, uh, to the motion.
Yes, ma'am.
I move to amend the motion for the approval of sale as the, of the property as follows. The board enter a twenty year surface lease of the property with Edie White subject to the following conditions. The annual rental paid to the Lafouche Parish School Board would be equal to its annual maintenance of the property, currently approximately thirty-five hundred dollars. Our attorney can put terms in the agreement that should this amount increase or decrease, it will be reviewed annually and incorporated into the agreement by mutual agreement between the parties. Improvements to the property by Edie White shall be pre-approved by the Lafouche Parish School Board. However, reasonable minor improvements shall be permitted. No permanent buildings or structures shall be erected. If in twenty years the agreement is not renewed or extended, Edie White will remove all improvements if demanded by the Lafouche Parish School. So moved.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Dr. Eard. Any public comment?
Roman Sankin went to Oujoua Street. I completely support Ms. Babbitt's amendment with the exception, like I says, I think it's twenty years a little too long. No offense or change Mr. Martin, add twenty years to the age, and you think it's still gonna be superintendent, it's all gonna suck. So I think it, it should, they can be somewhere between five to ten years, so I mean, twenty years now, I mean. Probably none of us are gonna be here in twenty years.
There you go.
There you go. I guess there may not be a whole school in the board. Um, but yeah, I just think that's lame, because y'all kinda decide twenty years will happen with the next few boards. That's just one of my concerns. So the decision tonight actually affects, you know, the next four boards for sure, and hopefully, one or two maybe superintendents, and uh, then.
Any other public comment?
Yes, ma'am.
Anna Perez, five thirteen Lake Court, City of Tivido. I am probably gonna be the bad guy here, but I'm gonna completely oppose the amendment, because once again, I really would like the city to go to first address the drainage issues. And Richard Knackham is my neighbor, and he and I have discussed the flooding for neighbors' homes, and that is a very serious issue. And once again, as a mom with four children, and knowing that Robby Wade, who returned two years ago, I see more babies, so I see more children. And twenty years is a long time. Ten years is a long time. I see that in five years, we're gonna have a lot of kids in the pre-K, or in the Head Start program. And I'd like the schools to please think of that property, the future of the children of Lafouche Parish or the city of Tivido. So I do oppose the amendment.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other public comment?
Do I need to state my name?
Yes, sir.
Tim Robichaud, two twenty-two Route Pelletier in Tivido. I respectfully disagree that this would have anything to do with the flooding, and I do think the city of Tivido needs to address the flooding, because our school, we received more than two buildings in the back. I, I don't believe that this lease would affect that in any way, in fact, I would push to, with, with you regarding flooding, the city of Tivido looking at flooding, because we were affected by it. And also would a- agree that maybe we should put in the lease that either party could get out of the lease. Let's say you guys decide, we want to build a structure there, well, you give sixty nays or whatever it is, we move whatever, just put on the property, and it's done, same for us, that we would be allowed to get out of the lease. If in fact it wasn't, didn't work, and we would also be amenable to less, time being on the rest. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Any board comment, Ms. Shaw? Oh, wait, I'm sorry.
Sharon Knackham, six two three Fairway Drive, Tivido, retired teacher, um. The amendment is twenty years, is that gonna, will you adjust that to maybe ten years? Cause I'm really not wanting to sell this property. I mean, public school has so little, and this property is pristine in the middle of our town, our city. And so, um, but leasing it, I, I would do with you for that, but twenty years again is very long. So you would adjust the amendment to say ten years or? And then Mr. Tim talked about, how would the amendment change? That's my question.
So thank you for the discussion, the answer may come up, I don't think she's supposed to be.
Right, you, you're just giving comment, but we're probably gonna answer your co- your question in our discussion.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Alright, any board comment, Ms. Partita?
Yes, um, wait, I have called on Ms. Shaw.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, as the resident representative from Golden Meadow, um, typically this is flooding and, and drainage issues are something that are a concern to my part of the parish. And I'm really sorry to the residents of Tivido that you are experiencing things that we have been for years. In this most recent hurricane, uh, Golden Meadow had much less of an impact than Tivido did. Um, so with that said, I would like to clarify a few things. The um, contract that we would draft and presumably uh, approve or oppose this evening would most certainly include, just to reiterate, uh, no improvements to the land, the land would remain green space, there would be absolutely no structures. And uh, whether Edie White's school would choose to use it for athletics, it would not be in the form of an athletic facility, but simply for athletic purposes that would be uh, performable on grass. So I don't think that that use would impact drainage in a negative way, in that we wouldn't be changing the, the land whatsoever for that. Um, I am not opposed to a lease with those restrictions spelled out, as far as what we would allow and disallow. And I would like to see perhaps a ten year lease term to start with options to renew or cancel, uh, agreeable by both parties. Um, again, no changes to the property, and I don't see that having any further impact on drainage, but I am glad to see that from conversations that I've heard tonight, that the city of Tivido has been contacted because of some of the significant issues that have happened in this neighborhood as of late. So, that would be my uh, inclination to move forward with that lease. I'm sorry.
Now I'm just talking. Um, I, I want the public to know though, that when we built the school, we had a great big drainage study done, and we had, we have no impact on what floods this way. We drain all of our water from the school back. So uh, we, you know, we did spend quite a bit of money before we even started with the building of the school. And if, uh, if you ever driven by Edie White in the afternoon, you will see students track meet going on in Pelletier Park. You see students practicing, the, the younger, uh, eighth graders practicing football in Pelletier Park. And I think it would, you know, and every shot put, they have to go to another place, you know, when there's a track meet. So I think if, you know, as, as neighbors to the school, I think it is a good idea to lease it for those activities, so they can keep an eye on those students that are out there. So um, I am definitely, uh, I like the amendment, um, I'm not sure about the ten years, I think twenty years with the option to get out of it at any time. I think that would be, you know, okay with, with me, but it's up to the board.
Yes, sir.
Madam President, thank you. Uh, I did wanna just make, mention that in all of our contracts for the last few years I've worked with our board determining, uh, we, we always, when possible, include an opt out clause for all of our contracts. Uh, so this would be no different, the, the term is really just to provide some sense of stability. Uh, the, the actual document would have, if Edie White no longer has need of it, they could opt out if the district would choose that we no longer wanna do that anymore. There would be an opt out clause in Mrs. Tim's right, sixty days notice by either party could terminate said document. So the, the twenty years is really just a space holder, as opposed to a commitment to have the property in their uh, use for that time.
Thank you. Ms. Babbitt? So if you attended the meeting or if you watched it, I had several concerns. I was very vocal about not selling the land, and if you don't mind, I'd like to just reiterate some of my concerns and, and, and just share. So first off, my first reservation was we had this building as a school, we didn't know what the foreseeable, foreseeable future was. Drainage concerns, I spoke about drainage concerns, saying that, um, we had pictures from one of my constituents that showed us how bad the water had come up. Also, it was very concerning to me that once the land was gone, we couldn't get it back. And, and addressed many of the things that you also said, like, we don't know what the future's gonna bring, you know, we may have to add to this building one day. And logically, it would be that that would be the best place to do so. Also, something that was very important to me was the fact that we do want green space. We built this multi-million dollar school and we promised green space. And so it was very important to me that we didn't just hand the keys to the kingdom to someone else to build something in front of it. With that being said, I'm even to the point where I pass there today and I admire the trees. Like, I don't, I don't wanna see the trees go up. Like, I don't, I don't want to see the trees go away. That's all we have left of our East Tivito Junior High School, you know, footprint. So I agree with you. I I don't want to see the land changed. However, I do think it's in the best interest to let students use it as it remains. My goal would be, let's put some kids out there at recess. Let's, let's put a fence, let's make them safe. Let's let them go and throw a shot put. Let's not build a building. So in essence, I kind of think we are on the same page. Let's give the green space that we promised to the neighborhood, but let's utilize it and let our kids enjoy it as well. Um, I'm also not opposed to the 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 changing of the timeframe if if the board feels that it's necessary. And I really like the idea of that opt-out if if either party, any party would like to. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Mr. Lepont?
The most important thing in the contract, if it is a lease, is that it can be no substantial improvements without the approval of the lessor. As an attorney, I have put that in almost every lease I've drawn up. That means the lessor still has control of the appearance of the property. Whether it's, whether it's a building, you can't improve the the building without approval. Whether it's it's a green space, you can't improve. And and in my opinion, going with you, Tina, Ms. Batten, excuse me, it is, I agree, a substantial improvement or disimprovement would be the destruction of the trees. They would have to come to us to get that type of permission. Be that said, I think, Mr. Sapi, and for example, maybe I think our community would probably feel better with more of a ten-year lease than a twenty-year lease. And the opt-out protects both parties. And the main thing is, I like the idea, is that we want the place to be used, whether it's private school or public school kids, you know? Both 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 parties could use it. And with this is, it's a trial. It gives you a chance. And if we don't like it, if it's not working, we have the opt-out clause, you know? We have the opt-out clause. If Edie White doesn't like it, they have the opt-out clause. So one of the most impressive things I think about this board is we have the ability to discuss things rationally and 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 talk about it. This board is turning down five hundred thousand dollars for this property. Five hundred thousand dollars that this board could use since item. But we think the greater good is to keep the property under our control so that we can make sure that there's no other damage to the, that we don't contribute to any other damage to our neighbors. And I think what what's being proposed is correct. The only thing, I would ask that you change your amendment to ten years with approval of your second. And I think we could go that way. Maybe that's a point of order, but Dr. Giott can correct me on that.
Yes, we can. We can go ahead and amend the amendment. Right, so it's on the, the amendment is on the table. So you can amend the amendment to get it all correct.
Would you like?
One other thing, if I'm, I'm sorry.
No, you're perfect.
One other thing is, this is an agreement to go to the parties to draw up an agreement that we still have to approve. This is, that's, that's the most important. We're not saying tonight we're leasing the property. We're saying tonight that we approve the the uh, the the right to lease the property. But whatever document is drawn up has to come before this board and we have to approve.
That was gonna be my comment. Any other board comment?
This amendment first, before we amend the amendment. Do, would you like me to read an amended version of the amendment?
No.
No, no. Wait.
Right, so the issue is we have to capture who's making the amendment to amend and who's the first to give the second.
Right, and so, I'm sorry, point of order. So the point is, is that when a friendly amendment or amendment is given, the first and second have the right to adjust that amendment accordingly. So.
I'll say first.
Ms. Batten, if Ms. Boujwa, we give you the floor again to make the adjustment.
Wait, comment first. If we are going to get the attorney to draw up the amendment or the lease agreement, do we have to stipulate all of what Ms. Batten is saying in our amendment or just amend it to be a lease instead of a sale? And because we're gonna approve the lease further down the line. But we don't want to, well, we changing the term, the the year, so we can change that too. We don't want to possibly put ourselves in a pigeonhole when Mr. Amadi is going to change. Is my thought and my question. Let him decide. Mr. Amadi has already overlooked this.
I I think you're perfectly safe. I think it's captured in the minutes you're intent. If you approve this amendment on the table, I have the information required to have him craft the document that I think meets the intent of this board based on the discussion in the minutes. And then we bring this document back for final ratification.
Okay.
The question on the table now is, is Ms. Batten gonna amend her amendment from twenty years to ten years until she get a second?
Yes, I would like to report to amend my amendment that the board went into a ten, into a ten-year surface lease agreement. The property would be like subject to the following conditions. Do you like, would you like me to read the conditions?
That's fine.
So we capture that.
But we've got all that, all right.
And then we say about if either, I'm sorry.
First, we need a second.
Okay. Some.
So move to the ten years and Dr. Giott's gonna second that amendment. We also need some public comment again. So any public comment?
Roland Sapi, Winston Boujwa, Street Bridge, I'm with you. I'm pretty much gonna agree and and I always, I really always agree with one of your legal matters with you because you're one of my professors. So, um, yeah, I I was, I was told that each, each party would have a buyout laws and opt-out laws and then having a ten-year amendment, you know? There's a possibility. I don't want to pick on Mr. Martin. But he may still be here. And you also, some of you all may still be here, especially some new or less, because you have twelve years to turn down. All right, I'll, um, I request that you approve the amended amendment. I request that you approve the amended main motion. And I request that you adopt the motion.
Okay, it's just a comment. You're just giving a comment.
I did.
Any other public comment of the amendment? Any board comment?
Madam President.
Yes, sir.
So I think with, you know, obviously the present information that's on the board or or say on the table for the public's concern is that, you know, this is gonna be another month, two-month process before we get it back and officially make that contract approvable and live or potentially live. So I would encourage the public to definitely follow up with the city. Go to their board meeting, express those. And I'm sure you're not gonna be alone because we know that that's not the only areas that had drainage issues and probably had drainage issues for a while. Again, backing up what Ms. Fratita said is, when that project was was dram- dram about, we did a extensive study on drainage and where it needed to go to consider the community in that. Because again, even though it's a big footprint that we established this middle school on, it it would be significant to the community in that, already knowing that it's a challenged, challenged drainage area as it is. So I think this gives some time for the city to kind of get it addressed or at least create a plan. And we know that we're not looking to make any changes to it that would significantly change the drainage structure that's already in place. And and again, maybe the city can incorporate and and give y'all some more answers on what they can do. So that's all I would like to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Batten?
I just want to say thank you to Mr. Tim for being so patient and so willing to speak this, to talk through it with us and come up with some kind of solution like everybody else. So thank you very much.
Any other board comment? Okay, so we are voting on, it's gonna be a hand vote, according to this one, to amend the amended motion. We gotta vote that first?
Yes.
All right. We're voting on the amendment to the amendment to make it ten years instead of twenty. All right, so it's, uh, motion by Ms. Batten and seconded by Dr. Giott. And now we need a hand vote. All in favor? And Mr. Mr. Wright says, oh, yes. All opposed? I didn't see. Just check. Now we can just go straight to the vote. Because we've had public comment and the board comment. So now we are voting on the amended motion to lease the property for ten years with all of the stipulations and knowing that our board attorney and Mr. Robichow's group will get together and come up with a lease that we will vote on again. So we are voting on the amended motion. Hand vote. Correct. Okay. That's fine. They worked quickly. We can vote on the community. Good job, ladies. And the vote does care.
Carry drive.
Yeah. Yes, sir.
So Madam President, I I would like for us to revisit what showed up as D, which looks like it's a policy revision that we did not address above.
The the policy revision, Dr. Giott, was actually addressed in policy. That's a typo. Policy. B C B B.
It's letter B.
What is letter B in your policy revisions? What does it prove that?
Uh, I I I tend to disagree.
Am I not reading it correctly?
Because it's B C B B and not B B. C.
Notification of board meetings is the one that was in the wrong place. It wasn't, it was a different.
That is, that is my point list of order.
Okay, it, but in my agenda, it was C, but it wasn't typed on you guys' agenda. You see, I was off one and I was. But it, so we should go back in policy and.
So Madam President, I would like to read the one that we missed in policy. It states to approve revisions to policy B C B B, notification of school board meetings. So move.
Yes, that's not, B C B B, you said, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I brought her D in there. All right. So moved by Dr. Giott, seconded by Ms. Fratita. Any public comment?
Point of order, um, y'all didn't adopt the main motion as amended.
Yeah, we did. We wrote it on the computer.
We did. Y'all, y'all, there was two, there was two votes, but there was three amendments. I mean, there was two amendments, but there was, there was two votes.
We amended the amendment on the first vote.
We amended the motion.
Yes, but once you adopt the second amendment, you also have to adopt the actual agenda item as amended.
So you are out of order. Yeah, we did it. Okay, public comment on.
Now you need a motion to deviate from the agenda to go to that policy.
Point of order. Mr. Dr. Giott.
So. So, Madam President.
Yes, sir.
I would like for us to move to revisit the section on policy and procedure so we can adopt this revision to this policy.
It's moved by Dr. Giott, seconded by Ms. Fratita. Any public comment? Any board comment? All right, we will take a hand vote. All in favor?
All right.
This is, if we're able to vote on this, to revisit that one we skipped, you know? Between the others. All right, Dr. Giott, you have the floor.
Well, I appreciate that. Thank you. So it is to approve revisions to policy B C B B, notification of school board meetings. So move.
Seconded by Mr. Lepont. Any public comment? Any board comment? Hearing none, we can vote. And motion does care.
So Madam President, again, just to the point of order, technically us relocating that is fine. I don't think we needed to do it because it was listed in the area that we were still functioning in. So again, we corrected it to help out Mr. Sapi in his rubbish rules, so.
Thank you, sir, for that explanation.
You gotta move the, not rubbish, the state statute.
New business, on to new business. Item seven, item number seven. A, to receive a report on the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five student enrollment figures for all of LaFouche Parish schools. Mr. Fields?
Yes. So we attended Martin, President Boujwa members of the board. Every year, the office of child welfare attendance reports on two enrollment figures. One is called the total enrollment figure, one is called the minimum foundation program or MFP, enrollment number. The MFP is what we call our money count. It's the highest source of revenue for our school district. Therefore, it's the most important count. The difference between the two is that the MFP does not include federal programs, pre-K and so forth, whereas our total enrollment count includes those pre-K students. So the numbers therefore look different. The MFP count is taken October first. It's taken again February first, where adjustments could be made depending on enrollment. The unofficial count for this year is twelve thousand nine hundred and seventy-four. That's the MFP count. This is a decrease of a hundred and eight students compared to the October first, twenty twenty-three MFP student count. Current base per pupil amount in the MFP formula is right over four thousand dollars per student. Keep in mind that again, that pre-K and other pre-K preschool children are not funded through the MFP. Our total enrollment for October first, twenty twenty-four is thirteen thousand five hundred and eight students, which is a decrease of a hundred and eighty-one students from last year's October first total enrollment count. Also note that the October first count for two thousand twenty-four student enrollment are not official until around November eighteenth, when student information system data is due to be cleaned up for any errors. So this concludes my report on the two thousand twenty-four student enrollment count.
Thank you, sir. Item B. To consider approving the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five pupil progression plan with recommended changes. Mr. Fields?
Yes, so the pupil progression plan is required for review annually. The plan, as most of you know, is about sixty to seventy-page document. It fluctuates from year to year. Depending on legislative action, it could increase, could decrease. Nevertheless, it's a plan that guides our administrators when making promotion and retention decisions outside of the traditional way that students are typically promoted or retained. It's a document that our our school leaders refer to or. It's a document that our our school leaders refer to on a regular basis, a very important document by our district. And this year, you'll notice, because we forwarded everyone a copy of the plan, you'll notice that it looks a little different. Uh, we decided as a committee this year to revise the template that the state provides to us. There were, there were some discrepancies, there were some, um, inconsistencies, uh, in the document, to be honest, which it didn't flow well. So, we thought we could come up with a better, more efficient, um, way for our administrators and our parents to find things in this large document. We met for the first time in July with a committee of supervisors, we met again with a committee of educators, and we met about three weeks ago with a committee of parents to review the document. Uh, and I propose it to you for consideration of approval.
I need a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five pupil progression plan. Moved by Mr. LaFon, seconded by Ms. Wells. Before, um, we do public comment and board comment, I would like to offer a motion, uh, amendment to the pupil progression plan. If you look on the top of page twenty-three, where it talks about honor graduate, the very last part of it says that a student has to have a cumulative grade point average of three point five or above with no final grade lower than a C to be considered an honor graduate. I had a constituent reach out to me and their student fell into a kind of a gray area, I guess I should say, where he took, he actually took more than the eight advanced placement classes and one of the classes, he made a D in. But he ended the year with, uh, I think it was a three point seven five or three point six something, but he wasn't considered an honor graduate. I think we are doing our children a disservice. Let's say you make a D in your first honors class. And so, it it's gonna discourage you, well, I won't be an honor graduate anyway, so I just soon let it flow. But if we say that, okay, you made a D, but if you can bring up your grade point average to at least a three point five, then you can be an honor graduate. I feel like we would be motivating them to do better than saying that, oh, well, you made the D, so you're out of the ballpark. You're out of the ballgame. So, I would just like to amend scratching off with no final grade lower than a C to be considered as an honor graduate. I'd like to just stop it at a three point five or above. That's my amendment or change. So, I'd like to motion that amendment to the pupil progression plan, seconded by Ms. Schottenstein. Any public comment on the amendment? Any board comment on the amendment?
I just wanted to say that the students that that do this, it takes them a while to get accustomed to advanced placement. They are in a disadvantage because a student that just does the regular curriculum will, can come up with a three point five, but they don't, it's not the challenge that we have, so I think it's a good.
Schottenstein?
I agree that removing the, uh, grade lower than a C, but keeping the three point five GPA as a requirement is definitely, uh, a good move. And I'll say from, uh, experience from other students, you know, we've had some struggles in our high schools and are still experiencing some, to my knowledge, I believe at Central Lafouche High School where we are now a teacher. Um, I know Central and South Lafouche for sure had a shortage even in the honors area. Some of these students were subject to learning in a library setting with sixty-plus children at one time and one instructor. That is a strain, to say the least. Um, I can see that it impacted one of my children personally as a freshman last year. He still managed to score very well on his league test. And so, we encouraged him to just shake it off and don't look back. So, this is gonna be a benefit to him and many other children. Um, that's gonna take that sort of black eye off of their permanent record, if you will, and still allow them the dignity to have the honor of being an honors graduate and be recognized for the hard work that they have done. You know, it's, um, not to say that we're condoning low performance in honors classes, but when you have a record that shines, you know, these are children. We all make mistakes and especially growing young adults. We need to allow them that and show them that it's okay and that it's not the end of their, their career, if you will. So, that's all it is.
Ms. Ben?
As a high school dual enrollment teacher, I would say that transitioning from a regular class into doing enrollment classes, that that is a huge change and you have some children that do struggle with the change in how you are actually teaching the class. Um, and I agree, I think that by taking off the C would give them motivation. If you have a student that made a D and they're still able to bring up that that GPA to a three point five, that tells us all that they're working very hard. So, I do support this, I think that's a wonderful idea, thank you very much.
All right, any public, I, I, did public comment?
Oh, you did?
Yes, yes. All right, so this is, we're voting on the amendment to strike out the.
And this will affect this school year, right?
This is gonna be affected this school year, yes, sir. So, a hand vote on the amendment. All in favor?
All right.
All right, or two minutes. Now that we did public comment and board comment, we can, we we need to vote on the amended pupil progression plan. All right, so. Because it says with recommended changes. No, I'll make straight into the amendment, you're right, I'm sorry. We need to do public comment on the pupil progression plan, amm- uh, motion, amended motion. Any public comment? Any board comment? All right, now we can vote. And the motion does care. Thank you. All right, on to the item number eight, memorial resolutions. A, Ms. Gertrude Eisen, retired secretary, Mr. Meyer, right?
Ms. Gertrude Eisen was hired on July first, nineteen seventy, as a secretary at Temple Elementary School. During her career, Ms. Eisen also served as an accounts payable clerk at the business office and as a secretary for the ROTC department. Ms. Eisen retired on June thirtieth, two thousand one, serving on Lafouche Parish School District for a total of thirty-one years.
B, Ms. Stacy D. Danos, retired child nutrition technician, Ms. Wells.
Ms. Stacy D. Danos was hired on August twenty-first, nineteen eighty-nine as a child nutrition technician at LeRoe Lower Elementary School. Ms. Danos retired on May thirty-first, two thousand and two, serving the Lafouche Parish School District for a total of thirteen years.
Madam President, I'm, I move that we, uh, that these resolutions be adopted by general consent and that a copy of these resolutions be recorded on a special page of our minute book, excuse me.
With no objections, let the record reflect that these resolutions were adopted by general consent and will be recorded on a special page of our minute book. Item number nine, tentative dates of future meetings. A, committee meetings, policy and academics committee, business committee, and land and facilities management committee, Wednesday, October sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four. B, regular school board meeting, November sixth, two thousand twenty-four.
Madam President, before we drew.
Yes, sir.
Just one comment. It's just refreshing to belong to a group of boards where we can have discussions, um, reasonable discussions, civil discussions. I think maybe Washington could learn a little bit about watching this board on the way. It's a, it's a pleasure and an honor to be on this board.
Thank you, Ms. LaFon. I think we all feel that way. Getting no other, um, like, mid, business before the committee? This motion, this meeting is adjourned.